I'm going to call the planning board meeting, special meeting. July 22, 2019, 6:30. To continue open public hearing for site plan approval for 449 Wachusett Street. Get up and make your presentation, get up, and then I'll call the second one.
Sure.
And if they're told I have all three open in about three minutes.
Again, I'm Andrew Barakis. I'm a professional engineer with AEC and Wood on behalf of the app and property owner. And we're just here to provide updates on this last meeting.
Yeah, I got 31. Open the continued public hearing for a special permit approval for 449 Wachusett Street for use.
So just as a brief outline, updates from the last meeting. I've noticed that there's a few bullet items, outstanding items. Just planning to run through each one and just look if there's any feedback or in public. And we'll address each one. Just go for next steps.
And I'll open up the third, 6:32. Continue public hearing for special permit approval for 449 Wachusett Street for the water supply protection district. Yeah, the full board. Okay, do you want to make any additional presentations?
Yeah, so I'll just run through the bullet items and look for input as we go through each one. Just going back to the last meeting, it was the review of wildlife impacts that was deemed heavily required by the board. So we completely thought it was satisfied. There was further action from the board pending receipt of the stormwater report by Green International affiliates. We did receive a stormwater report, provided comments, and received an additional letter from Green International, which outlined some conditions. Essentially, the letter stated that they did not see any reason why the board could not vote to approve the project based on the updated stormwater report and the conditions they outlined there. One of those conditions, another one of the bullet items from the board, was the conservation permission. Since we last met, the wetlands NOI application has been submitted to the city and MASP. We've been in touch with the conservation agent, and we are currently scheduled through a public hearing on August 13. So we are continuing our process through conservation there, which Green outlined in their letter through several simulations that were more geared toward the conservation side of things. So essentially, the design plans have not changed since we last submitted to planning. There was some minor changes based on comments in the green letter in terms of notation in the legend or line types on the drawing, but the overall design of the array has not changed. We just submitted a new set of drawings with conservation within the NOI application. So that's for August 13. There was another item based on public comment at the last meeting regarding emergency shut-off locations, remote control, coplar from the monitoring station is going to be located. We issued an email response back in July 15, I believe that was distributed, outlining where the kill switch would be located and the monitoring would be done off-site. Then we also issued a document from DOR and MASP just on general information on solar projects, you know, for public concern, just as an additional informational resource to the board and public. If it's found to be helpful at all. So those are essentially the last remaining items that we were aware of and we believe we addressed. So we'd just like to consult the board on next steps, potentially have a vote or have further discussion, unless there's anything else that I'm missing, I believe that's what we stand.
Do I have any one from the board have questions?
Okay, so we talked about the soil study, and you're going to re-submit with the new calculations for that, right? Because the soil wasn't defined, the patch didn't find sandy, it was something else with this kind of, right?
Yeah, so this has happened before on other projects. We do soil mapping, GIS data, NRCS data, and then as we get closer to construction, we go out to these test sites and soil testing, confirm our stormwater model when we get closer to construction. That's for a stormwater design perspective, but also for racking and pull tests when we get closer to, you know, the applicants, closer to selecting materials for construction. So that's not a problem.
All right, yeah, that's a little time there too. I have a question on the abutis, right? Was the MDC one of your abutis to the property? MDC?
MDC.
The MDC?
Metropolitan District Commission.
It was one of the abutis to the property, right?
I have the list.
Check the list.
Yeah.
It's called... Say that again.
MDC.
N as in life.
As in area of life. Because I believe this is all MDC, and I'm just wondering if they were notified, if they had any statements or comments, because I don't recall seeing or hearing anything from them. But they are abutti, I do believe they are abutti. If you were coming down Elm Street, the driveways on the left, and cockroaches on the right before you get to Ponder Road. Did the MDC, did they acquire like 101 acres of this land from the Correio, I believe?
Supposedly just trail the fuck down.
So I'm just wondering if they go about, if they issue anything. Do you believe if this...
Is that an abutti list?
Was there a Correio, was it an abutti as well?
No, it isn't.
Sorry. I think it's highest in the...
The MD?
MDC. They bought 101 acres from... Last name of De Mail, I believe. He kept the small five-acre posse in that house that's ready to fall into the ground.
I don't see...
Is it still not GIS as well?
The GIS is, I'll tell you, it's not the most updated. It only gets updated annually, and there are errors on it, so the assessor...
But it shows the MDC already.
I can see it almost.
You know, these are questions that people have been calling me with, you know, and I, you know, it's a good question. The MDC is an abutti, but we should have somebody running from the MDC as well. But I don't know if they are or not, I'm not sure if they are or not.
Can you link me up?
According to the GIS, they were.
Yeah.
And that was as of what's in there today. I looked it up today myself.
Yeah, and that's not the most updated accurate information, the assessing. They have to go and double-check everything when they do that abutti list, to make sure that all the data is recent. It's a problem that we have.
But shouldn't they, if they are, they should be notified? And we should get some kind of opinion from them.
If they are.
If they are.
See, we get the list from the assessor. The assessor's list.
It's 300, yeah, that's 300.
Okay. So they might be just outside of it.
Well, I don't know, that's the question. I was told by multiple people that the MDC did buy all that land that abutted this property. What they thought about way they moved construction, so it's questionable.
Well, do they bought the property, then they bought the site?
They bought the site. Isn't that the property?
It's the...
Well, not the whole piece of property.
It's not the whole piece of property, no.
They only own 25 acres.
Well, right, no, I understand that.
Does anybody abutti other than the people who own it?
I don't know.
It's in the middle.
Going to this, yes.
The list was generated from all the properties.
From the whole, from this here. My place where the...
Well, red.
No, red around, yeah, I got it on this man. So this was all the abutis.
That's the property.
That for you guys, especially.
Do you know what the address would be?
Uh, no, I don't. I don't know what the address would be.
I can look it up.
I have it in my phone, but if you look it up, it's red. Because I think it's this piece here. I think this piece here is the MDC one. This is our path in, that we walked on in, right here. It's almost here, it's right here, right? We came in right here, right? And from what I understand, from what I was told, the MDC took control of 101 acres, I believe, or 111 acres. I don't recall which. But I was told it was this land here.
Who's the name you had?
De Mail.
Oh, I got it. And it makes it on the makeup.
Probably not.
She still owns that land.
Is that fair, do you know?
De Mail turned all, he had 100 acres from Elm Street to Wachusett. Then he put those little silver tags in the trees for MDC. So he turned, he sent us all a letter stating that they had, I forget what they called it. Some MDC-type land, conservation land. You know, that's what he turned it into.
As you know, that land, does that abut the site?
What's that?
Would that abut the site?
Excuse me, sir.
Oh, you got it.
Yes, can you please identify yourself?
Barry Pearl.
Barry Pearl, okay.
I live, what, 6 Elm, NY, Wachusett Street.
So there is a big MDC posse in there.
Yeah.
And if I was going from Wachusett Street to Elm Street directly behind your house, would that cross through the MDC land?
Would what cross?
If I walked directly toward Elm Street from your own property, would that...
Yeah, you'd go right through it.
...through the MDC land, so they are abutti.
I don't know what to say as far as...
What people have been telling you, you know, it's MDC land, and it used to be owned by someone else.
They have bought it up of the, their site? Piece of property?
No, this piece of...
Because from my understanding, they own all the property.
No, I can see it right here. I can see it right here.
Isn't it the middle of their property?
Yeah, but no, it's not from the, not from the 25 acres, 24 acres. It's from the periphery of the total site.
Right. Well, where do we decide on, 25 acres or the whole site?
The periphery of the site. 25 acres is the building.
Well, all you're using is 25 acres to the site, right?
But still the site being used.
They don't have abutis to that site, or that.
I don't know about that.
It doesn't abut SolarFang site. It abuts number four Fairway, which abuts the property.
Same rollover.
The MDC doesn't own it here. The mayor owns it.
Safety stones, it's some, yeah, certain term he put on it, I can't think of what it is. To get a tax rate.
Type of contract.
Can you say that again to me and tell me who abuts it?
I didn't have sound.
Sal. Please identify yourself, sir.
I'm Ken Bashan. And number four Fairway on the left side of the wall is De Mail's property. It's about 100 acres.
Yeah.
And he sold the conservation restrictions to the MDC.
There you go.
It abuts number four Fairway, but it's not even close to the SolarFang.
No, that's what I need to know.
Okay.
That's my point.
Yes, no, 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 that's what I'm trying to get to.
SolarFang is on all of their property and surrounded by all of their property.
That's correct, yes.
I was just trying to make sure.
Yeah, I know.
Because I do know the MDC has it, that's all.
So they put a conservation restriction over the property.
And that's outside of the periphery. The only thing is, the only abut is you, basically?
That's it. Well, we have abutis on Elm Street.
Correct. No, I know that, yeah. I think they probably got all of them.
Do I have any other questions or comments, or do I have any questions or comments from the audience?
I have another question. Are you going to give it to Taylor's site itself or anything you need, right?
I think we have, I think...
We have, it's all open, right?
It's all open, we've had all the drawings.
So you did the maintenance, I saw a report on the maintenance. You know, he's recommending that you farm and report with us and be here on the upkeep and maintenance, things like that. I'm sure we read the same thing. On the maintenance itself, I mean, you get the solar panels in, you get the farm in, right? So you got to control the grass, the weeds, things like that. Can you give me an idea on the maintenance is done?
Yeah, that's outlined in the stormwater land plan. So basically, group construction, there's the stormwater permission plan that's filed with the EPA and the construction permit. So all that's monitored through construction to, you know, minimize and prevent erosion and make sure everything's built and there's no runoff and the grass is running and established. Post-construction, that's where the LNM plan comes in for, you know, they have annual maintenance anyways for the facility and panels and the fencing and whatnot, but that also incorporates the vegetation, the mowing, you know, once there's ice here, checking on the basins, making sure there's no rills and runoff. So all those things are incorporated to the maintenance.
Now, there's no point in time that you guys are going to be using fertilizers or weed killers or anything like that so close to a watershed area with a lot of watershed buffer.
No, you just mow.
Well, I mean, that's a big thing, you know. You guys are real close to that buffer. So I mean, that would have to be a no, no matter if you get it or not, it wouldn't allow you to do something. And I'm sure on the other site, it's a lot of, I don't know if they're sensitive, but it's this site.
I had a question, on your fencing, does it go right to the ground? Does it's smaller levels, or are they going to be able to...
Yeah, we have, we call it...
Have you ever done animal...
It's a crit gap, there's a six inch, yeah, a six-inch gap that allows those smaller animals to pass through.
Another bigger area. I know, I just, you know, I know there are a lot of deer that get out up there regardless of what the gentleman said on the first meeting and first public hearing. I know there's a lot of animals that go through there. Or I walked, I saw all sorts of sign of different animals. I even took pictures of the different signs and so on. And I know you guys were very generous with the wildlife refuge, Joe.
Thank you.
And we do appreciate it, because that's beautiful land. My whole concern with this whole thing is we're creating this monster in the middle. I mean, this is, I mean, we talked about this, but to me right now, we're creating this monster in the middle of this beautiful land in between the wildlife refuge, the state forest on the other side of Elm Street. And to me, that's a corridor. That's how I look at it. I just look at it as a wildlife corridor. And I think it's a real difficult thing for me to say, let's shut off that gap and... No, they're not going to walk through that 25 acres, because there's no reason to walk through. The birds aren't going to fly through. I think we've got some nesting eagles up here. Now, I'm not a tree hugger by any means. I just want to make sure that we can protect things and we can do things the right way.
Can't we make the same argument for every subdivision?
We could make a lot of these arguments, but this, no, this is different.
How is this different?
Because you've got a wildlife refuge, you've got a state refuge on the other side, and you get conservation land. It's all right there, it's all right there. And this is right there in the middle of all, that's what it is. That's why...
Is that a special property?
I didn't say it was, I told them. I'm just saying, those were my concerns.
If you were looking at space property, you wouldn't be able to do it on the road.
There are a lot of concerns around there.
Do it on a personal property.
Actually, the animal, animals are very flexible, okay? They'll take their luggage, they'll go around, okay, and they'll find their ways. And I know we did have some problems up in North Columbus, there was one, a farm, I'm not sure how big it is. Built off of industrial road up there. And I had a number of good things. Where did all the deer come from? Okay, because they were in that spot and they got relocated. But that only lasted for about two years.
That's a small little piece of woods. We're talking major forest.
I'm not sure, I was trying to find out what the size of that one was, but I don't have the size of this one. So anyway, that was one that was done without any input from this board. And we're just trying to do things right now, that's all.
If I may, I think one of the challenges we're running into in this day and age is that, I think the spirit of this and the spirit of the SolarFang is to be environmentally friendly, right? But to find the properties of land necessary to put one, the size that will actually make a difference. You know, you're going to be taking up space no matter what merits, but it's a little field or in the middle of the forest. So I think that probably they're coming from a place of continuing the environmental mission that they have with the Audubon land and et cetera. It's just one of those things, I think that, you know, it's hard to strike the balance between benefiting an environmentally friendly project that this should be considered because it's a solar power to not wanting to disrupt the ecosystem. And I appreciate where you're coming from, I just think it's challenging to get the balance there.
We want to minimize it as best we can, and that's the important thing with the Green Report and the things you guys are doing, you know, one of the conditions, like Sal said, would be, you know, on the herbicide, so, you know, because you're not going to... It does slow down.
Cards.
You know, and we've had tests with that before.
Just wondering if there could be corridors, you know, that could take the place of going through, waving a clip, you know, corridors we could maybe, you know, have built in somewhere as part of the approval of this project to say, okay, this is at least something to minimize the effect, you know. Can we try to, you know, it's like a natural draw. Animals follow certain characteristics, certain topographies, and they go to certain types of timber, they go to certain areas of protection during the winter. Is there a corridor that can be created on either side of these projects so that they can still flow over to the other side of Elm Street? And I don't know what that corridor, that corridor could be a real simple thing. Could be a real simple thing. It might be a little extra clearing outside the fence line to create a corridor like that and then even with some buffer on the fence still.
How far would you clear outside the fence line?
Clear it a little bit.
Yeah, it varies, five to 10 feet, it varies in various locations. A little bit more on the southern side, on the southeastern side, there's the pond, it's made of the basin, it's made of here and that. But it's not, it's not a large additional, you're basically clearing what's necessary for construction purposes.
So I mean, I'm just wondering what that topography is outside of cleared area, where when they put the fence, and if you could create some type of funnels on either side of the project so you do have a corridor for them to get, you know, toward the state forest. Because that's how they roam, they roam down from May Street area and all that behind Showland Ponds. They come up Wachusett, over Wachusett Street, they use those power lines as a major corridor. There's a corridor for you. And then they come out to your refuge and go behind you and then across Elm Street into the state forest and all the way to my Wachusett at all, you know? You know that game, right? You follow them all the time too. So I'm wondering if there's something that can be done there to create that type of a funnel so they're not, you know, you're not diverting miles to try to get around that terrain.
Diverting more than miles.
Not miles, but just an easy way for them not to get near the parents, for them to go around the parents.
I think they could walk around.
Yeah, they might.
Why don't we put signs up for the animals, say, take a look?
Yeah, they'll listen.
I just think, what's the solution? What's the solution?
It's rural residential.
Rural residential.
I mean, I know it's allowed, I know it's allowed, but I mean with a special permit. But I'm thinking, I mean, what if they were putting in a, I mean, how many... What if they were putting in 20, 25 homes?
70.
Would we be in the same discussions?
I don't think that would be the same discussion, because...
I expect it would be worse.
With 50 cars? And now you're dealing, now you're concerned about roadkill. I don't know, that's all I'm saying. I don't know why we're so much more focused on, and I don't mean to sound...
Yeah, but it's beautiful, it's a beautiful place. Thirty, 35 years will be gone, that's what I'm saying. So would you rather do this? I'm not opposed to this.
Would you rather...
I'm trying to do this. No. Not at all. Okay. And you're like...
I do think you have that in his back plot.
Of course you did, I knew that.
I've been on this board for 25 years, you've been on for 35, you won.
We started looking at that years ago.
We only talked here about being...
I'm asking for a lot here, I'm asking, it's a special permit. So, you know, I'm looking to say, let's not, let's be smart enough to not ruin this for 35 years, right? That's all I'm saying.
Stand feet around the tree?
That's, I don't, it's up to them. I'm just thinking what Sal was saying is just anecdotal. Like, how do we know that court is going to work? And maybe it makes it worse, I don't know, how do you know? This is just...
Well, there's no corridor there, it's just woods. So it's just going to be all woods around this, we're just diverting. Honestly, they'll create a public... They're going to go around that.
They'll create something, guaranteed.
I don't know, you get some pretty steep topography.
They're going to send it to you. They're going to send to you.
Don't send them lions.
Yeah, you shoot them all.
It's not true at all. It's not true, it's a giant gunshot. Can we create a funnel so we can put a tower?
Do we have any other information? I think we were going around and around on this.
I mean, Sal, you can make that motion.
Do you want it to add as a condition?
I was just wondering if we can, you know, the east side, you know, there's some elevation right on the east side of this site. The elevation goes from 750 up to 1,050. The other side is a nice gradual, maybe a little bit outside, or just, how can we control it to the western side? Can we do something that's going to make it, you know, if they normally walk through that area, now we've got a little bit of a buffer on the western side of the site that's going to give them easy access. It's not to be cut down all the trees, but just some...
How much, Sal, how much room does the deer need? How wide is a regular deer? I'm asking you.
I'm asking him to answer. That's what I'm asking. Don't make light of this, because this thing's going to be here for 35 years. And when something happens down the road and it's irreversible, then we've got a problem. So you want to be smart on the uptake on this thing, on at the very beginning, to make sure you cover all your bases. That's all I'm trying to do. So don't make a mockery of what I'm trying to do.
I'm not getting...
Because that's really irritating.
I apologize for asking this question, just because I know, did you go before the conservation question?
We were going on August 13.
Is that a continued hearing or is that a, it's the opening of the public hearing?
Okay.
So you're just getting started with that?
Yeah, that's really good.
And, you know, I'd like to hear my answer.
Well, the condition...
Conditioned on... I'm just asking questions to see if there's maybe easy solutions that would, wouldn't cost much and that would make a difference, so, it's all good.
So I think the concern that the developer has and the owner has, we've been here a few times. We addressed the wildlife issues before.
Excuse me, sir. Please identify yourself.
I'm Jim Martin. I'm attorney for the developer.
Yes.
And, I apologize. And we don't have any evidence that this will have an impact one way or the other. You know, we've had the state look at it, we've had, you know, our own people look at it. And from working in this area quite a bit, you know, there's no assurance that if you cut a swath or a... I mean, it goes through this area now where it's woods. And if they go off around it, they can go off around it. If there was some data that said, oh, if you create a swath, then they're going to walk down the swath. The question is, do I walk down that swath? As opposed to just me entering through the woods and coming out of the pastures? And so if that's the kitchen, the plants have to be redrawn and we just haven't seen any data that suggests that that's going to be effective. We're not opposed to maintain the wildlife there. But I think Mr. Pearl's comment should not be lost. This is an environmental epicenter. It's just not these animals that are going down the path. It's wildlife refuge, conservation research, and now solar. Everyone saw what the media published, you know, three weeks ago, 2050. They don't change our energy. This solar farm may be there 35 years, but it might not be, might be a worse issue in the country if we don't have alternative energy. So this makes it sort of an epicenter of environmentally conscious efforts. And the developer's not opposed to doing something that makes sense, but is reluctant to do something that is not backed up by data and is going to prolong the issue.
Okay. Well, I think we have enough information. How about the board?
I'm going to close it here. Did you ask the audience again?
Our last team don't have any other information. Anybody else wish to make any comments?
I just want to, I mean, this all stems, we have an ordinance on this, but this all stems from statute. The way the statute's written, just to keep in mind, that it's under 48, section 3. It says, "No zoning ordinance shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate the installation of solar energy systems or the building of structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy, except where necessary to protect the public health, safety, or..."
That's what I'm saying.
And just, the way it's written, it's almost written, it almost reads as an example.
Like a telecom act, 86, it's almost like a...
There's some similarity. Second, this was a cell title. We got a motion, second.
Certainly, sir.
Yeah. And we ran into that cell title situation also.
Yeah, we have a motion, second.
Okay, I have a motion for Paul, second, I buy Fred to close the open public meeting for site and approval.
We got to close.
I got to do it individually?
Yeah.
Okay, do I have any further discussion? Here, no, no. Call for the vote on the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Call, say no. Motion carries.
We're going to close the second hearing for use.
I have a motion made. Second it, I have a second. Fred, continue public hearing for special permit approval for 449 Warchusett Street for use. Any further discussion? Here and now. Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Say one?
Yeah, same motions.
Paul?
Second.
Fred? Okay, motion made and seconded. Continue public hearing for special permit approval for 449 Warchusett Street for water supply protection district. Okay, do I have any further discussion? Here and now. Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Call, say no. Motion carries. Record meeting called, order.
Patrick Pearl.
Here.
Paul Isaac. South Torje Putty.
Here.
John Sisum.
Yep.
Carol Turius.
Here.
Thomas Carrier.
Yes, sir.
Fred Fredericks.
Okay, we don't have any minutes. The special permit, special meeting. We do have plans submitted, A and R approval for Ludo Lavia.
Good evening. My name is Greg Wilson. I'm the surveyor. I represent Heston Ruby. On a re subdivision of the A and R plan that should have been that you approved on back in 2015. And she would like to reconfigure her lots so she could build a house on the proposed lot closer to the street.
I think so.
And the reason being is that she didn't want a laundry driveway. The first A and R plan that I drew back in 2015, the house was supposed to go in the rear of the lot. And besides the length of the driveway, it was a physical concern for the topography of the lot because it drops down. And she felt it would be easier to put the utility in closer to the street and less costly. And so I drew up a plan to use it where the proposed lot could fit the house closer to the street. There was a...
That's lot B.
Lot B. There was a zoning violation on the existing lot as it's drawn. And that's the lot width. And she was hoping to go to the Board of Appeals.
That's right. It's going to be on 50 feet.
So what are you changing on this?
I'm changing the lot lines.
The required footage is 80 feet?
80 feet on one lot and remain on the rest of it, right?
But I mean, the required footage, so it's 80 feet.
Well, that one has 80, doesn't it?
You get 80 on one, you get 115. You're going to close this. It's got to be 115 carat that. This is all in you.
What is the zoning?
Zoning is the lot width.
10 feet.
No.
It's got to be a hundred. It's got to be a hundred. And 180 house exists, correct?
180 is the existing house. And there's a zoning violation of the lot width for the existing house.
That is correct.
As a result of your proposed...
Reconfiguring the lot lines.
What, then, last?
It complied, it complied before you...
Before I changed the provision. But because she didn't want the laundry driveway and because of the lay of the land and the topography and less expensive, I think that would fit the house closer to the street.
Well, just curious, if the line came straight down, then you wouldn't create the violation. And so couldn't you build the house where you're saying to, because you have the required frontage?
There's not enough of width.
Here's the old lot line here, Sal.
Yeah, I see.
So you're moving that. Sal, did, these people own that, this whole property?
Oh, yes, she does. She wants to see how it's going to be.
This can almost like pork chop lots because when you get that smaller property in front of the house, you have to have the 100 feet out here. I'm saying the 100 feet is here. That's not, that's where the house starts. That's not legal.
What? Well, she knows it's a going, here, is a zoning violation for the existing house. She was hoping to get variance from the Board of Appeals.
She doesn't think that for us to change. Because once you say this is...
Yeah, we can't give you a...
If we approve this as an A and R right now...
We have to say it's not a common law. You can't make it a common law.
As well, as well.
Can't make it a common law.
There's not enough of it.
That house, they're making it a common law.
Yes, I understand.
We can't do that.
But can I ask you a couple of questions? And I don't know if this is what I made you work or not, but if this thing like this, we must still have the frontage. We will not make this continue and we can still have the frontage. And she's still being able to get her house where she needed to. Just curious. Wouldn't that do it? Because this is the old line right here.
There's only 15 feet to that line now. No, 30 on the side, 25 on the side.
Right, right.
You only got 28 in the front. No. But that's going to come up already.
The sizing of the lots is good.
So what if you want to put the driveway? You get the proposed house, that's a lot smaller. That's a real small house.
44, I thought. This is a nobody one.
It's not that small.
It's a ranch.
144.
Well, she has a driveway on the existing one.
Over here for this house, right.
And she was going to use the existing driveway.
So what does this driveway do? What would it take?
Comes here as a parking.
Oh, okay, as a parking area for both of the houses.
This is a lot, this is just one.
Yeah, no, it's all one lot.
Shared driveway.
No, it's not.
Yeah, you run into a shared driveway. Eventually, you're going to sell this.
No, they're not going to share driveway. She doesn't...
Is there a driveway, no one over here?
No.
Or there's one that exists?
Existing, yes.
Just one here.
Yes, there is.
I think what Sal says, you know, if you can bring this over, this line out into here, something.
You realize, right, we're not the zoning Board of Appeals. So all we have to do is determine, because I'm looking for it.
It's a lot size.
Lots depicted, lots depicted with adequate frontage but with some other defect under zoning has resulted in controversy in one particular case of the Cape. The appeals court ruled that a plan showing two lots with enough frontage to comply with the zoning bylaw but with several zoning violations was entitled to A and R endorsement.
So it's got to be 200 frontage and 100.
A plan, I'm sorry, Sal, a plan showing lots with zoning violations other than frontage deficiencies may be preliminary to an attempt to obtain a variance or to buy a budding land which would bring the lot into compliance or even to sell the nonconforming lot to an abutter and in that way bring it into compliance. The zoning violations are not sheltered by the A and R endorsement. A and R endorsement cannot be withheld due dependency of an attack on the title of the applicant. Once an A and R plan has been endorsed, the board is not free to rescind or modify that endorsement. So, I mean, I mean, basically, that's the whole point. It's, this is exactly what he's attempting to do. So a plan showing lots with zoning violations other than frontage deficiency, he's got plenty of frontage on a public way, it may be preliminary to an attempt to obtain a variance, which is what he says he's going to do. If he doesn't get it, he's not going to, he's not going to record the plan. I move to endorse.
Even though, even though it makes nonconforming, where the house is already done with handling.
That's right. That's exactly what, I mean, there's a case exactly on point that says that.
Second.
Okay. I'll have to go to Board of Appeals.
Oh, don't hold it up.
They don't get the variance, you don't do the plan.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have a motion made to endorse. Pay and second it?
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Here and now, call for the vote on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Call, say no. Motion carries. Okay, whole business. Continued site plan approval for 449 Warchusett Street. This is on the site plan. Do I have a motion? And do I have discussion? Let's have discussion first. Do we have any conditions we want to add?
Oh.
What are we talking about?
Do you want to add any of the ones from staff? They go back to May?
Yep.
I can give you my memo if you want to look at it.
What other conditions we have on there?
There's a utility notification that prior to installation has to be satisfactorily addressed. And it was understood that the applicant applied for interconnection with Massachusetts Electric, National Grid. Final acceptance must be granted by Massachusetts Electric prior to issuance of the building permit.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, but it's not. There was an issue with the fence. The fence had to be a height of eight feet. And they were proposing a seven-foot-high fence. So I don't know if you want to...
So that would be a waiver?
Oh, I should put eight foot.
And then there's the, we have to make sure we get the financial assurance. And they're proposing a bond of $159,000.
Plus, it's going to be conditioned on...
So that's the other conditions that are left from the previous meetings? For the fence height, which we require, we...
Yeah.
Should we hit the proper amount of clearing? You know, we said we're going to go so much past the fence.
Can't feed that thing, you said?
Can we say five feet?
Five, 10, here. We can make that a condition?
No, I don't. I was just trying to remember where it was.
We didn't specify.
Yeah, but it was a required footage, right, for fencing, past the fence, clearing past the fence?
Right.
There was a, there was a required, how far do we have to clear beyond the fence?
It varies depending on weather, wind, climate.
Yeah. What are you going to do? What are you proposing right now?
It varies five to 10, 15 feet depending on the location.
So no less than five feet, no more than 15 feet, obviously.
Are you making that a condition?
Well, I mean, we'd like to know where, you know, how far outside the fence they're clearing. I mean, we don't want to...
Yeah, but you got to tell them.
No, I know, I know, I know. I'm just, I thought at the very first meeting, it was just a set number, five, 10 feet. But that changes.
It varies because of the way that the panels are laid out when they're clearing around the basin.
So like, I can see what you're saying. Like, on this end right here, we're going to see 15 feet. More likely. And then everything else is pretty tiny, right?
So, vegetation and...
That is on the other side of the fence, right? The outside fence, go on.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Everything is clear inside.
Right. This is to the outside of the fence.
Okay, I'm just trying to get conditions. Okay, that's what I'm trying to nail down.
Well, all was in the face.
Yeah, there was the car chrome.
Is the height that important?
Well, that's, that was, that's the discussion. Right now, so a motion, a request, I'll deal with it this way. I have a request for a waiver on the fence height from eight feet to be reduced to seven feet.
And the material to be chain link instead of wood.
Okay, well, let's deal with those. Let's deal with height, okay, and then we'll deal. Well, I don't know. We can deal with both, huh?
Yeah, the fence.
On the fence. On the fence. So the first part is, is on the height. Okay, 7, is, we feel 7 is sufficient?
I think it's...
Okay. All in favor of 7 feet on a waiver? Our motion is in order?
A waiver, I'll second.
Both of them. Okay, motion made and I'm liking it. To reduce the fence height to 7 feet. Any discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. On the material of the fence. Current material request, wood. Okay, the waiver would be that to go to chain link.
I'm going to approve that.
Second.
Okay, well, a motion made and seconded to change fence material from wood to chain link. Do I have any further discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries, we have a chain link fence. Do I have any other waivers?
We have the con con for...
Well, that's condition.
That's the condition.
That's the condition.
Sorry, sorry.
Other than any other waivers?
Talking about waivers, what, did we have any other waivers? I don't think so, not that I can remember.
The applicant, any other waivers?
Was there one on the height? Was there a maximum height?
We changed that.
The modules, the modules.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the panels, I'm sorry.
We're approximately 9 feet, but I believe it's 80.
I think, I think what he's saying is, I think our condition says the panels could be...
8 feet.
Right.
We're approximately 9 feet, depending on the...
Well, that's from the ground anyway.
Right. It's still part of the bylaw.
Right.
Make a motion to allow a waiver for adjustment in the height of module from 8 to 9 feet.
8 to 9 feet. Motion made and seconded on a motion to height to 9 feet. Any discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. That's it for waivers. Okay, conditions.
Well, the con con approval, regulations.
Yeah, it's, it's the standard ones of any department head conditions. The, the report from Green.
Correct, their reports and deficiencies.
And of course, the...
Running of soils.
And conservation. I don't think we had any other. Well, the bond, we'll deal with the bond under the, well, yeah, I can do bond on the site. Oh, the bond, the bond should be...
Vacants.
Oh, that was the discussion. The bond is to 100,000, 150,000?
159,000.
159,000.
159,000. Now, wouldn't the bond would be, is this the bond? Or this is for dismantling this thing?
Yeah, called decommissioning bond.
Decommissioning bond.
Yeah.
And how did you come up with that, on that figure? Is that a...
It's an estimate of instruction of decommissioning cost 30 years from now.
You are no... So is today's cost?
That's the, that's the...
There are actually people tell us they do this for a living.
The scrap value.
Right, and take minus the scrap value, and they take the labor, then they multiply it by a cost factor over so many years. They come up with a number, we didn't make a number out of that. That's the number that was calculated.
What's that?
It's the analysis, so they allow for costs like erosion control, after chain link fence removal, removal of the wiring. That's actually the biggest expense, the AC/DC wiring. Utility hole removals, transformers and gears removed, removing the concrete pads, PB modules removal, the racking system, screw removal, and creating the disturbed areas. So the total labor cost, you know, built out over time, came up to presently would cost today 80,000 dollars. We need to do that longer.
Double here.
I mean...
Double here.
Roughly.
Okay.
Is there a condition in here about...
Well, the condition, well, we get that, that the bond be established for, what was the price?
159,000.
159,000 dollars. Do I have any further discussion on that? And motion?
That's a move.
Have?
Second, on the site plan with those conditions and the waivers.
I think, yeah.
On the site.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries on the bond, on the 15, I K.
Oh, I thought that was on, okay, I thought we were...
No, that's it, I can take the bond separate now.
Vacants.
Any other?
Okay. Yeah, the maintenance, can we, is there a condition in here about weed control or fertilizer? Or is that con con?
Yeah, you can.
Let's throw that in.
You can.
Because you never know what's going to happen.
You make a condition that the, a condition would be in order that the...
For maintenance.
There'd be mechanical control of vegetation. No chemical control.
No chemicals allowed for maintenance and vegetation. They don't use it anyways, that's why. Then why is wrong?
Yeah. Okay, the condition is on that. Do I even make for that motion?
So...
Sal, do I have a second? Have? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries, mechanical control. Do we have any other? Any other conditions, anybody? Okay, there was the standard conditions and maybe all the condition that approval was a conservation requirement. Plus any conditions from the department. Other departments in the city shall apply. Motion. Motion made and seconded. Okay, on the conservation requirement and department head requirements. Any others? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no.
I make a motion to approve the, well, I make a...
I almost said in the first one, so, so this one was the condition. I got to go onto each one and then with the previous conditions.
Well, we're not going to repeat all of them, are we?
No, I, I'll just, I'll just...
So, well, what, why can't, don't we have to approve the special permits before we approve the site plan? Because once they, I mean, I know it's semantics, but once we have the...
Yeah, okay.
So I make a motion to approve...
The special permit.
The special permit on the watershed protection district with all the same waivers and conditions as previously approved, voted on and approved.
On the site plan. Okay, any further discussion on that? Here and now, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. On the public hearing, special permit for the water protection district.
That's the one I just...
Well, you just...
I'm going backwards.
You only did... Oh, use, we have to use.
You got to do use.
Yeah, okay, we went backwards here. So, continue public hearing for special permit for use. And with the same conditions as for water supply district special permit. Okay, I have a motion made.
I'll second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no, motion carries.
No.
And...
Wait for the vote.
And that's...
So we have a 5-1?
5-1.
We have a 5-1.
And then the last one. Will we make site plan approval?
They need, they need a super tour. Yeah, I know they do.
Okay.
And the site plan?
And for the site plan.
I make a motion to approve the application for site plan with the two previously approved waivers and all the conditions as outlined and approved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no.
No.
Motion carries.
Just to clarify, for the first vote for watershed protection district, was that a 5-1 also, or was that a...
No, that was...
So...
There's still inconsistent. I mean, that makes no sense what's...
Okay, guys.
That's what I'm trying to talk you guys out of. How can you approve it?
No communication, do I have any communications?
Uh, you see nine.
Director's report, executive session. Sal, you want to make your motion? So, have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no.
No.